Ezra just emailed, said it's not gonna make it, or he won't make it until April. So we'll just get started, because we've got it for him.
Yeah, okay.
So Chair's remarks, not a whole lot new. For folks with interest, Butterfield dropped their lawsuit.
Thank you.
So they threw the suit.
Good to know.
Those of us that have been involved in that should understand that. I don't think there's any other news, and the HDRB is...have they engaged a consultant yet? Because I haven't heard back.
So there was a little bit of drop in the ball, but evidently today, they sent their recommendation to the Village Board to hire AKRF.
Oh, good. That's a good one. I mean, it's good full service. They can do whatever needs to be done, and they're quick, and they're very reasonable.
And so the Village Board, I believe, will meet on Tuesday and confirm if they're going to proceed.
Engagement? Okay, great. Excellent. And then I had asked them too. I said, when I spoke to the Village Board, because we're actually working late tonight, and I said, "We really ought to just do just a blanket, just a consulting agreement, just a rate, to just say that regardless of whatever application comes in, you know, there's an hourly rate that you bill at than to ask for, you know, a general project budget based on that hourly rate, because the project is this big, it's this big, it's this big," you know, just to kind of do it. I said, "I don't, it doesn't..." I think in, what they were trying to do was do a correct, you know, full scope of work, and I don't, I think that we can do it in a more streamlined fashion. So that way, in fact, we have another one. We have another application that's gonna be a consultant. It'll probably be the HDRB taking the lead again, although we'll see. I'm not sure, I shouldn't say that, I'm not sure about the planning board issues that are there. I haven't seen, I haven't seen the application yet.
So, Matt, I'm sorry, just can you clarify what you were just talking about? Is your board considering hiring?
No, no, no.
A second consultant?
No, no, no.
Or as part of the EAF process?
No.
You will have questions that you will want the engineer to...
It has to all be coordinated. It has to be coordinated to one EAF. Obviously, there is impact, and then what you try to do, not what you try to do, but certainly the goal of the applicant is get to a negative deck, right? That those impacts get so mitigated that you arrive at a negative deck. That's the hope of the applicant, right? And certainly, the village is engaged in that effort along with the applicant, to the extent that they can have enough mitigating actions to mitigate the impacts to, down to a negative deck. So when we talk about things like, I think really the only thing we've got really is runoff and stormwater management, right? Because everything else, if the parking is managed on-site, which never happens here, it's only happened once, this'll be the second time on Main Street. You know, a two-story building with roughly another two-story building of similar type of same, no change of use, there's very, there's very little for the planning board to really look at, but the mitigating factors, the lead agency needs to look at, and then say, you know, there's obviously impact with runoff, there's the, there's the Foundry Group stream, which is a, I don't know if it's considered a Hudson tributary, but it flows into... And then there's the, the stormwater management on-site, because you're planning on doing so much pervious surface, impervious surface around it. So it has to be coordinated to the, to the HDRB, the lead agency's review.
That's fine. That's what I wanted to clarify, because in our emails this week, it sounded like you were thinking, like you might be hiring a separate engineer, but if AKRF is reviewing...
No, no, I was saying that it'd have to be coordinated with them, that's why, that's why I was even saying, I'm not sure the value of this, right? You'll come and you'll, you'll give it to us. We don't yet have AKRF, right? So we're not, we're not qualified, obviously. We certainly know what these things look like. The only other opinion we'd probably get, which is just the, you know, was just the engineer that works on the water and sewer system here. Because obviously injecting into the sewer system, you know, for a stormwater runoff, the building has, I mean, the village has, you know, has been addressing serious INI infiltration and, you know, and a lot of other issues with the sewer, so obviously injecting into the sewer is problematic. It would require a permit anyway from the DSA. But so we'll, that's, all that stuff has to be coordinated back to the EAF, right?
Yeah.
All right, so we have, I've got no remarks. We have no minutes, so we can actually approve. Do we have reported members? Anybody? No? Okay. Correspondence? We just, I didn't see anything new. We just received the, the fully, the full seeker form for 126 Main.
Also revised.
And then the full, the revised EAF for 126 Main. Well, business. Okay, so we have 126 Main. Actually, before we do that, actually, just an amendment, a motion to amend this, the agenda. We have, I misunderstood on 35 Market Street, that she could make it tonight. She actually cannot make it tonight. She wanted to make the next one. So we need to just remove them from the...
Which one is the...
That's the Borden Madden Carriage House, the distinctive carriage house.
Right on the street?
Yep.
Near West?
Yes. Is that west? As you turn left to go down to the train? So it's on the edge of the Downey property?
Oh, it's on the Downey, that one. On the Downey property? They want to tear that down?
Yes. So that's, I don't think we've seen the, we have the application on that now. She's gonna, she'll come into the next one.
Okay.
Okay.
No comment.
So we go back to 126 Main. Okay. Yep.
Okay. Great. All righty. So we have updated site plans. I'll give you six copies for now, or how many do you need for now? Because we'll, we can distribute them to the five, four members.
I don't need a copy.
This is for the file.
We can certainly produce more, but if you don't...
I don't need a copy.
What's this for now?
We'll look at it now, but...
Yeah, just now. Want to just open the one?
I hate the waste.
We'll just open the one?
Yeah, let's just open the one. I really don't like this. So, I don't know if you all know Glenn Watson, you probably do, who has actually worked on all of these documents for us, so he's here to discuss them in more detail, but what we wanted to do was just have an opportunity to discuss the stormwater management.
Oh, good.
Drainage plan in more detail, because when we previewed it, we just presented a basic site plan, which showed the parking, position of the building and the property, but we've looked at that in more detail in terms of grading, how we're gonna, you know, keep the water, and everything.
Right.
Light lighting, kind of same, things like that, so...
Have you, has anybody looked at the comp plan with respect to impervious surface?
I don't know.
I have not.
No.
Okay.
There's very little impervious surface being, because everything that's parking lot is impervious surface.
The gravel?
The gravel is impervious surface.
It's on top of...
It's not, doesn't have to be on top of anything. As long as it's being driven on and parked on, it's impervious surface. And because the, because the car is compacted.
Okay.
So are you aware of something in the comp plan?
No, it's a question. I, no, I just said I hadn't reviewed it. Yeah, no, so, no, we, like I said, we're not, we don't have a consultant engaged yet, so we're gonna look to what they have to say with respect to what we're looking at.
Right. No, I just didn't know, since you brought that up, that you were aware of something that you know, because you...
There were discussions about it, addressed, and we don't mean it's...
Oh, you were on the comp?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. So long ago.
I don't remember anything. So, I don't know what the best approach is, but Glenn, would you like to present?
Let me run through the plans?
That would be great.
If you'd like, I can do that.
I think that would be great, so we can kind of give you a summary of what's proposed.
Right, so we'll see. We'll see.
Actually, I'll send it to him at the table, is that all right? I'll answer comps, and then I'll give him the good change.
Site plan consists of five sheets. The first sheet... First sheet is not this sheet. It got upside down, so I don't know. Sorry.
I have the first sheet, if it's not...
Existing conditions plan is not here.
So, there's the existing conditions.
Yeah, this I can just work with. The existing conditions plan is just that, existing conditions. It shows you what's there now.
I think I wrote that.
And that's, which is fairly large gravel area and the existing building. This, what you're actually looking at, is the removals plan. It calls to the removal of that, the building, sidewalk, the walkway around the building, the concrete sidewalk, and that's for trenching to get underground electric into the building. This is fencing that has to, that needs to come out. This is fencing that needs to come out, and I've been told, and my fellow in the office is working on it, you said there's an agreement with the neighbors that they will, they have agreed to allow you to replace the fencing.
Well, we would get an agreement with that before doing anything.
Get an agreement, okay. I didn't want to misstate it. So what we've identified in this, and we picked, the second sheet, is basically just identified all the things. There's some random posts that are sticking around the property. And so that's kind of the first part of the operation, is to remove what has to be removed. Of course, there's some element of erosion control action that comes first.
Glenn, before you play, I just want to indicate, so this is the existing gravel parking area, just in reference to what we were just talking about, about the gravel being considered impervious surface.
Right, but this is, this would be a new, this would be a new site plan?
Correct. I'm just showing, you know, in relation to what...
But the first thing is, the first thing you do is, other than set the erosion controls, get rid of what you're not gonna need. These trees are being removed. They are Norway maples, which are invasive, and the, specifically says to protect the sugar maples. It's really not an awful lot, it's, you know, not a terribly big site, so...
Are things being relative here in the village?
It's true.
It's one of our biggest.
That's what I'm saying.
This is what we, what we intend to do, is build a new parking lot, and you can see, look, it covers all of the existing, and then it extends out.
And then it adds, yeah.
And it adds. It adds a total of about 1,500 feet of pervious surface.
What's that as a percentage?
Of what? Of the...
Of what you believe to be an increased impervious surface?
I can tell you what there is, and maybe I can do a hand, head calculation of that. It's 0.14 acres going to 0.175, so it's that three over, three over 14, one over, one over five, but 20% increase.
20% increase.
Something around there. So this, this is the plan, it shows you what's going to be added. What I, you know, the new building, which I just highlighted. Curbing that will start at the building, go around, go around, along the parking lot and down, and down behind the building, towards the river, and then parallel with the river, back to here. And then the parking lot will be paved. It will be graded in such a way that if you follow these blue lines, which I did very quickly, the water dropping here will run towards the curb and run along the curb. We have a low spot here, which will, which will direct that water into a infiltration trench here. This has to be fairly level, and what's going on here is the water will go, this water will go this way, towards this infiltration trench, and the water over here will get, flow along the curb and into this infiltration trench. So we've tried to capture as much of the water on the new surface as possible, so that before it leaves the site, and it'll eventually get into this brook, it will, it will at least have a chance to be, to track the solids in the infiltration trench, and some of it will be infiltrated, and some of it will eventually, that'll fill up and eventually make its way into the stream as it does today.
What's the proposed material?
Oh, for the driveway?
Yeah, it's asphalt, it comes, and it was talked about, but...
Asphalt. Oh, no, concrete.
No, it's reinforced concrete.
Right. So, I keep forgetting what her husband does in living.
We can't say asphalt.
And then, and then there'll be a concrete sidewalk around the building, and these areas will be planted. This would be a garden, is here, and there will be an evergreen hedge for plant, for screening the neighbor. It will be behind, it will be in between a new fence and the parking area, and there will be a small pathway that go behind there for maintenance and other, there'll be some other reasons. In between the two buildings, it will be, it will be gravel to, and with a pathway that walks back to where the trash containers are going to be kept during the week, so that's what these, this indicates.
And how, is there, how are you managing the stormwater over there? Between the two buildings?
Well, some of it's gonna infiltrate, there's a trench under, there's a...
Yeah, we have a trench drain.
There's a trench under here, under the gravel for that.
Before, I mean, is this a preliminary design, or is this what you intend to do?
Well, this is what we intend on doing now, it's pretty close. There, there's certainly gonna be changes along the way that are gonna be dictated by your findings, and dictated by the Architectural Review Board's findings, and dictated by the client's findings.
I have a couple of questions about the infiltration basins.
Yeah.
Calculations done to take care of the surface water? Is there enough area in the trenches?
Well, there's certain, I don't, calculations have not been done yet. I know that they, these, these are normally designed to pick up the increase, and let the, and that's, and they will be done. So they're just preliminary around here, they may grow a little. I doubt that they'll get any smaller.
The other thing that bothers me about trench retention areas is they don't get any maintenance. And when they don't get any maintenance, they become ineffective. And if the perk in the soil's no good, they're ineffective from day one.
Have you done the perk test?
Not yet.
I mean, I don't know what the soil consistency is for that area. If it ends up, it's clay, and it's not a good thing.
Right. Tests will be done. I can't argue with the fact that you need maintenance in order for these to work, you know? But they can be designed to minimize, they can be designed in such a way to minimize the maintenance, and particularly, you could fill them up almost to the top, you put in a layer of fabric that's designed to trap the solids, the things that would really mess up the gravel. That can be taken out periodically, and maybe it's six inches down, and then it's done. I have every confidence that the Costikens will take care of this place, but...
So, when you talk about maintaining these, what does that mean, and how often does maintenance need to be performed?
Depends on the amount of traffic that you have, because what ends up happening is you end up, people carry things in, in, on their vehicles, right? Comes off their tires. You have leakage from transmissions, engines. When the rain comes, it washes off, and then it's gonna go into the trench basin. So periodically, those systems will get clogged, where they won't allow enough water filtration to get through. And once they get clogged, they become ineffective, and then the runoff ends up going in the stream versus...
And who does this maintenance?
Well, the property.
No, I, I don't mean that. I mean, I'm not gonna go out there and change the filters myself.
No, I am just...
Who would I be asking to do that?
You know, you could ask somebody, you could always ask the lawn maintenance kind of guy. You could, this is, this is, this is the top six inches of trench.
Sure? It's not something that's real high-tech. I mean, the easiest way to do it is to remove it and replace this, this top six inches, because if you have filter fabric, that's gonna trap everything.
Right.
So take the gravel out, take the filter fabric out, replace the filter fabric, and put stone, put new stone in. The cheapest, quickest...
And we clean the gutters. I mean, it's, it's gonna be, it's kind of a spring and fall, take a look, and take care of it.
Do you leave them?
And we should have the confidence that your contractors will be able to do all that grading with the cement installation?
Well, yeah, I can't, I'm hoping. It's gonna be rough at home.
I mean, that's pretty sophisticated. It's not like all that much.
I'll be there to make sure he does the right, so you don't have to.
Hey, you don't wanna have a family feud.
So, and then, what we hope to end up with, and it, well, this is the parking layout on top of the pavement. Traffic will flow in, be able to park, back out. We have site lighting, which will all be dark sky compliant, and that green hedge that's gonna...
How are you light, are you lighting the parking lot?
We're using night sky, volatil lighting.
Volatil?
Yeah. That's cool. So, right now, the plan is just to have four along the long road parking, and one in the middle of...
One, two, three, four, five.
And then one in the middle.
And then this, the fungibility.
And the parking table?
That I submitted early on as a separate sheet, and that hasn't changed.
So the infiltration, those are expected to overflow into the brook?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the intensity of the storm, obviously, but when you get enough rain, they're gonna fill up before they can be soaked up, you know, unless it would, you know, occasionally you find a deposit of sand that you can't fill it up with water, but it doesn't happen very often. That was the case up in Glazebury Court, this little sandbank, and you couldn't fill up the test holes. And just to round out the picture, there are details on the construction of the trench. Here is an erosion control point. Stockpile, topsoil material will have a protection around it. Infiltration trenches, tree guards, if they're needed, grass swales, stuff like, just basic erosion control measures.
And that, that was on C-104. Which is show the plan for silt fencing and the construction entrance during...
These, this is the place, these are the, these are the infiltration trenches. Again, the silt fence here, around this stockpile, over here in the back, and there's a construction entrance. I don't know why they call them entrances, they should be called exits. They're designed to prevent the mud from being tracked off the site onto the road, but they're called entrances. I never figured that out.
Now, what's happening with the neighbor and his driveway? Is any of his water gonna come out, do you think?
The...
On the other side of the...
This is near?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure I can answer that effectively. He was recently... So, you know, I...
I don't think so. To me, it looks like it drains back.
And it looks lower, but I haven't really walked it, I didn't wanna, like, be obviously trespassing.
I mean, both the properties kind of pitch.
Okay.
Pitch toward the back, but...
It pitches along the brook line.
But also, the brook is between his driveway and my driveway, so...
In the back.
In the back.
Yeah.
No, I was thinking more on the front, but it is, I think he is a little...
Yeah, yeah.
He's actually a little higher.
Oh, he's higher.
Because you're going up the hill.
Yeah, that's right.
But both properties, like I know, as, as ours, it pitches back away from the street. So he is uphill from us, but...
Something to be aware of, since the site has changed recently.
The, the asphalt...
His side.
Yeah. Yeah, I checked into that, and I required, and the code doesn't require a permit to pave an existing driveway, even if it wasn't asphalt.
Maybe the new code.
Yeah. And that's just it, it's the, you know, it's the funny thing about coming into 2017, or staying in 1890-something to do a restoration, you could just kind of, you didn't go through. But obviously, this is all gonna be on there. All right, very good.
So, yeah, we'll observe that, but there have been some pretty heavy, heavy rains, especially in the late summer, and I don't know if you've experienced anything, desert coming up and being...
I've never even, that wasn't even a thought after I had a lot of water coming into the building from the opposite, so I'm always more concerned about that.
Did you resolve your survey with the staircase, the encroachment?
Um, no.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we haven't, we're just in the works. Well, I don't, we just are hoping he would do something. I don't think he's going to, so we're not gonna have a question. Yeah.
That's too bad.
I don't know.
Anything else? And I think this is good, I mean, this can definitely go to the consultant, I mean, I don't see why we can't just send it over, send a copy over to the HDRB. Probably what we oughta do is, maybe we'll just circulate it. If you could, Arnie, look at it as well. It's an engineer, you've got Dave and Arnie, and luckily, they're still here for the moment, can give us their comments, and we could just send them over to the HDRB, to the consultant, to just incorporate them into their review.
So what I'll do is get card copies to the historic review board, as well as email them, PDFs, because they've been sending things electronically to the consultants, so then they can send these plans to the consult.
Right.
Right. And then, obviously, you can forward whatever questions and concerns for it.
If you have a PDF, that's all I'm talking.
Most of it I can print out, you know, I'm sure AKRF can print a PDF full-scale.
And then, we'll get, I hadn't actually looked at the comp, the comp plan, I was just a question as to whether you had, so I just pulled it up here. And there's a recommendation to encourage pervious surfaces for all new commercial, multiple automobile parking areas, and explore converting impervious surface to that, to surfaces that are pervious. So I'll, I'll just run that by the village attorney as to what, I mean, obviously, you try to, you try to follow your comp plan. It's down as a recommendation, so I don't know, but you're asking for an increase in So what, we'll just get an opinion from John on that, because obviously, it's not, we don't interpret code. We apply what we understand, and ask the attorney to help us with it. But in code, obviously, this conversation that we keep having is that it's not just the code, it's the code plus your comp plan. It's the, it's background information, it's the application of that code over time, and what kinda, and what, and what has kind of set a precedent, so, and obviously, what, you know, the whole reason you do a comp plan is to hope to comply with it, right? And if you don't intend to comply with it, you should really just change your comp plan. You should just not comply with it, so...
So how do you, if anything that's driven and parked on is considered impervious, how do you take a parking lot and take, make an attempt to make it pervious?
I mean, they even, they even have pervious salt surfaces, I mean, that just doesn't...
It's a perviable asphalt now, that's used in a lot of places.
That's a ma, that's a maintenance issue, too.
It's the pores in it, right?
Yeah, it has, it has to be power washed, and it's like you're cleaning your driveway.
But again, it, it isn't in our code, it is actually, it is actually in newer code. Most places are really addressing this, because when you take a site like that, where you have the ability for stormwater to perk down through the soil, but yet, the vast majority of it is covered now, then obviously, that water's gotta go somewhere, right? So if everybody were to do that, it just, you just keep, you know, you could have a cascading problem, literally. problem, literally. So, most code, I think the town updated their code for pervious surface, maximum pervious surface, we don't have that in our code yet.
The town has not done that.
They're in the process.
They may be in the process, they haven't done...
But that's why I'm saying they're in the process. So, there, you know, and that's what most codes, because stormwater management's just become such a serious issue, especially with, you know, I've got two properties that have never flooded before, they're just flooded, because they, you know, it's just, the rains are just torrential now.
Well, I can testify that after I pulled up my asphalt, put in item four, and then gravel, the amount of water that comes down my driveway is negligible compared to what it used, it used to cascade down my driveway. Now, I don't even see it. So, it's going somewhere.
Yeah. So, but again, that's not, that's not our code, the only thing we have right now is we'll assess for an opinion on what this, it's 3.34 in the, in the comp plan, I just opened it up and did a search for pervious, because I hadn't looked at it, obviously, we'll look at that, but we'll get it from John as to what, what a recommendation means, because obviously, it sounds like a recommendation, I think.
The intention with that trench train is to just perk into the soil also?
Yes.
But there haven't been any load calculations done yet as far as the...
I don't think so. To tell you the truth, I wasn't working on it, but I don't think so.
Okay. But you're ready for us to send this, this would go over to the consultant?
Yeah.
Well, you need some load calculations, I mean, would they...
You have to have that.
What do they...
You have to give them something to ask for.
What's that?
You have to give them something to ask for.
Gotcha.
But they don't cost you another hundred dollars.
No, you see, you see, if you do it too perfectly, and more time looking...
Ah, yeah, well, you've been around the block a few times, so...
Fair enough. Okay, very good, now, let's...
Give them something to find, let me stop looking.
It's true. So, with the exception of the concerns that you expressed, Dave, about the trenches, are there, are there others that, anyone else?
In the pavement.
Just that they have the skill to be able to get the flow. And yeah, you've got that one area where it's coming down here, that's right, where people are gonna be walking, is it all gonna turn to ice in the winter? You know, well, if it doesn't keep going, it's just gonna be one nice little skating rink along the side of the building.
Yeah, so, most of the, most of the need of this will really come from the consultant as to what's happening.
Yeah.
Dave and Arnie have a lot to add, and Judith and I have a lot more practical things, which is like, which is that standing water turns into, in the winter, it turns into, you know, turns into ice, it becomes, and obviously, we have a kind of a very high level public safety, you know, role to kind of look at these things.
But execution, it's just like when you build the building, if it's not built right, it's gonna have problems. So, we can't assume that a well-designed plan is not gonna be built right. If it's designed well, we have to make sure...
If the consultant says that this type of thing a contractor can easily implement...
Right. And that's for consultants, because look, we're both in this business, lots of things get drawn that can't be built, right? You know, and that the execution of it is very different than what the person that did the design and what actually happens and what you end up with, and the compromises that were made along the way, and sometimes even the cost are very different, so, I think that's, but that's for the consultant to decide, I mean, it's whether or not they believe it's within a reasonable tolerance, they can kind of manage the water going these different places and create dry areas where pedestrian traffic. I mean, that's for them to decide. We'll certainly ask the question, is there slipping, tripping, hazard, because obviously, cars sliding, too, is obviously not great either, because you're, but that's, you know, that's for...
And also, if you have enough places for your snow to be plowed onto, that the snow piles do not block how the water moves as it's melting.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot left there.
All right, put it in the back, you're gonna put it in the back western corner, right?
Yeah.
It isn't until you've been actually sued by people who have slipped and fallen in parking lots that you think about these things a lot.
Don't I know it.
So, Matt, just to clarify, these plans will go to the consultant, and they're...
What I think we'll do is, we'll circulate them to the board, we'll put just a short memo just on...
To your board?
Yeah, to your board, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to get an opinion, I don't know if we have to do that in a meeting or not, we'll talk to John, and it'd be great if we could just do a letter, just an email over, but I don't think we need to. We're not taking action, we're not drawing conclusions on information, we're basically just, you know, sharing information, so I don't think it really requires a public meeting to, you know, because Arnie's not here tonight, just to send a, send an email over to just kind of say, you know, those things like Dave was saying, maintenance, she was just saying, can it be executed per the plan, is there reasonable, you know, reasonable expectation that it can? And then we'll create other, you know, I don't think we'll have really that many comments, it really is gonna be, can you run off into the brook? I don't, I don't even know the answer to that, and that's, you know, that's for somebody that's gonna, you know, and the environmental engineers know that.
I do think it needs to be noted, though, that if they're piling up all the snow in the back next to one swell...
There's trees back there, too.
Will that trench be able to handle all that snow melt that's also got salt or whatever else in it?
Yeah. And that's always good, like the, you know, the practical questions of those, the kind of, those of us that live through it that don't design it, you know, to just kind of say, you know, kind of people's, you know, thoughts, just kind of say, oh, yeah, look at that, calculation on this, you know?
I actually always ask for plans that show where the snow piles were.
Good, good. Sorry, we have to do that.
I thought you can't put salt on the driveway, on the parking lot, anyway. Could you, aren't you gonna...
That's sidewalks.
You can't put it on the sidewalks, I don't know.
Because of the trees.
Hey, she's gonna take...
It eats the concrete.
She's gonna take care of her concrete. She's not gonna put salt on it.
Yeah, but you can't use, yeah.
Sprinkle over the road, it's unbelievable.
It'll eat it up real fast. So, is that something like, should we come back at your next meeting and sit down and look at this, you know, together, like...
No, but what it says, whether or not John says we need to actually, whether or not we can just do it in the email over to the HTRB, send it over to the consultant, because the consultants, I'm sure, like, as you're saying, is gonna have questions and ask for more.
Right.
So, it's, I don't think it's productive to keep kind of going over the plans here.
Well, it's productive to us, for us to be aware of your concerns and questions, so we can also be working on them, because they may go to the consultant, but if you bring up something like, you know, you brought up the maintenance, you know, we can start to develop and clarify our maintenance plan.
Well, the HTRB, the HTRB will certainly share the memo with you.
Let me, yes, sorry. Did I understand to say that in addition to AKRF, working for the historic district review board, you're gonna have Ron Gaynor look at the plan, Ron Gaynor, is that who?
I leave that to really, to the water superintendent and the mayor, as to whether or not they want somebody to look at this because of the volumes.
Okay, well, typically, typically, what, you know, happens at this point is that if it's a big enough town, it goes to staff, and if it's a small enough town, it goes to the reviewing consultant. He produces a report commenting on the plans, we come back to receive that report, regardless of who it comes from, and if the comments are relatively minor, we proceed, we ask to proceed to the public hearing. If the comments indicate that a complete rework is needed, you say, take this back and come back with those answers, and then we'll have the public hearing. So, I think what we're looking to do is move to the point where we can get those comments on paper and go one way towards the public hearing or the other way towards recycling the plan to come, so we can get to the public hearing.
I'm fine with it going to the consultant now, I mean, my opinions were just more long-term considerations, you, this...
And they can also be addressed later, I mean, it's something we haven't, you know, obviously, we've shared them here tonight, you know, and I don't know if Arnie's even gonna have time to chime in, to be honest.
Well, I mean, I missed the beginning, I apologize, I was up curriculum, my...
You missed my section.
Yeah, I don't know how much I missed, but, you know, I kind of echo what you're saying. We've seen this multiple times, going in front of another board as well, so, how much, how much do we need?
I think what you might have missed, I'm sorry, Ezra, is we, tonight, we're actually, we actually submitted a new set of plans with a detail during the stormwater, during which plan, whereas before, we just had a basic...
Which is what we had talked about before, though. When you first came in, we had talked about, we gotta look at, what you're doing with...
There was no plan, yeah.
But there wasn't a plan then, right?
Right, right. No, no, so I've been following that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, but you did exactly what we had asked.
Yeah, you probably don't need to come to us again and accept for the public hearing unless the engineer has 800 concerns.
Yeah, and I'll definitely put it, I'll just send an email to the mayor and to the water superintendent as to whether or not they believe that, I don't, it's their system, people, you know, that are attached to it, attached to it in a different way, they may wanna, they may wanna look.
So, I guess we'd like to be able to go back to the next meeting, well, I guess I should say, we'd like you to say, well, you've done enough to schedule a public hearing now, if you don't feel that way, which I expect you will.
No, I don't know that we would do, we can't do a public hearing because the seeker clock would start running.
No, that's not true.
And as a...
Seeker clock does, no clock runs until seeker is closed.
Okay, fine. What is running is you have to roll within 60 days of closing a public hearing, right? Do you at least concede that?
No.
I don't know what you mean.
It's not, ask Mr. First, I'm sure he'll confirm. Seeker stops, starts...
I'm not talking seeker, I'm talking municipal.
I didn't finish my sentence, which is seeker stops all clocks. You are barred from making an opinion regardless that there's another law that says you have 60 days.
Okay, we'll get John, I had heard that from John before.
Yeah, ask John, I remember.
It just doesn't seem practical to, for us to do a notice and schedule a public hearing if our engineer hasn't even had whiff of it.
Well, that's...
I mean, we don't know how long he's gonna take to look at it.
Well...
Yeah, no, we're not ready to schedule a public hearing.
No, okay, well, we would like to come back to the next meeting after, when your engineer has given a report, and hopefully, he could do that in the course of, meet monthly?
No, every, every other week.
Okay.
Yes, we probably wouldn't get anything back by the next meeting.
Okay, what if we could come back to you a month from now?
Right.
Expect that report, and then ask, at that point, decide whether or not we're sufficiently complete.
Yeah, assuming that the consultant is engaged on Tuesday, and the consultant then has to be freed up to start, obviously, they gotta decide, you know, they gotta assign somebody to do it, I would think that'd be very quick, I'm not sure which office they're doing it out of, but I would think they'd be able to do it pretty quickly, but we don't know any of that yet, so...
Is there any way that you could, you, well, you can't schedule a public hearing contingent upon a...
No.
Can't make a, you can't make a motion to do it.
No, 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 you have to be ready to go to public hearing, you have what we need, we don't have what we need.
No, I was just trying to say to, you know, to speed it up.
He might tell you that you can't have a public hearing until seeker is closed, but that's, no town around here does it any other way. They usually close seeker when they approve the project. That's just a practical way, he might tell you that, but...
Yeah, I've never heard that, it's interesting, you said seeker stops all clocks, I've never heard that before, even as a...
I actually just read that today when I was reading the seeker handbook, and I read the same thing, all other...
All other clocks stop.
Time, times, things stop.
Very good. Okay, all right.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, just to clarify, because it's been a lot of back and forth, you're going to converse via email amongst your board, come up with a list of questions that you would also refer to with these plans to the consultant that you would like to be answered.
Right.
They're gonna review the plan in general, but if you have specific concerns, we're gonna go about this.
Right.
And so, would you also inform that class for a reference so we can...
Sure.
Thank you.
Would you like me to send you a set of PDFs to forward to your consultants?
Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great. And then we'll, and then obviously, we'll ask John, obviously, that won't go through you directly, just for an opinion on the comp plan.
Correct.
Just to ask, you know, what are we, what does the planning board do, this is probably the first time, I think, we've really kind of looked at this, and recommendation...
Maybe the only parking lot in town.
As far as English, seems pretty clear what recommendation means, people get John's opinion with respect to how you apply the code, when your comp plan says, you know, to go a different direction, but it doesn't say you must, so, you gotta figure out what that means.
That would be great, and just so you know, our goal is that we understand the seeker process is just getting underway, but anything that we can be doing to respond to specific concerns of your board, the zoning board, and the historic review board, while that is all happening, is work we can be doing toward the end result versus waiting for a month or two.
Yeah, and again, I don't think we're gonna have a whole lot of comment, we're gonna have to talk about the height of the screening, whether or not it's fences, whether or not, Dunkin' Donuts is a good example where the planning board gets involved and says a high fence, it doesn't apply with code, because the planning board has the ability to do that, because the idea, the concept of truck lights, you know, at five in the morning or, you know, eight o'clock at night, delivering stuff shining into, you know, to residential dwellings is a, it's a problem. So, that's when you do things like that, I would think that's probably the only other thing we'll need to look at, but we're gonna also have to kind of get some bit of a temperature from the ZBA as to whether or not they're okay with, you know, with the planning board kind of, you know, kind of issuing something like that. It would seem, I think we'll probably have to take a look at the site, just to kind of see, because you're gonna, you have a lot of, you have a lot of cars in there, right, parking, they're parking both ways, right? Most of them are parking, most of them are parking to the west.
Perpendicular to the...
To the west.
And then one and two.
But then, yeah, so you have, you know, so I mean, obviously, the next, well, I don't know, actually, how far back is Silver Spoon, and where does the, does a residential lot start?
So, the Silver Spoon is here, and this is a residential lot, and I think there are four along here, and...
Wow, I didn't realize it's, Silver Spoon is a shack.
So many neighbors.
Yeah, and so, basically, this is a B1 lot, but it actually comes back in here even though it's a residential use immediately adjacent, and this is all residential from here.
Have you, have you gotten a feeling from the neighbors what they wanna see or don't see?
We are in the process of getting ready to contact them.
Because the question is whether or not you wanna look at, you know, five feet of wood, or whether or not you'd rather just see, you know, green screening and, you know, and filtered headlights. I think their input is important, right? I mean, because they're the ones that actually, they bear the, they bear the, they bear the greatest impact.
Light to a degree.
And that is, we don't, yeah, that's like it, but that is our intention to speak with the neighbors, because we've done a pretty careful study, and we have a plan for what we'd like to do, because there's actually a fair amount of fencing on all those property lines, so we don't wanna put up another fence back to that. Right, yeah, you had told us about...
But you're taking down fences, the fences that you're talking about, taking down, those are on your property or their property?
So, on our property. They actually, all around, they kind of wave over, so that's why we need to get permission.
That I noticed.
Sometimes there's a fence with the fence, they're almost touching, so there's just this mishmash of things that could be, could look nicer and...
I don't think we wanna dictate to you what to do at all. You really just, you know, talk to your neighbors.
I'm hoping as we talk to the neighbors, we can just, you know, see what they want. There is one section of fence back in the corner that I think is attractive, maybe they'd like to just continue it to a degree.
You know, they're the ones that'll be talking at the public hearing, so...
Yeah, and the question is really, I think that it really comes down to that, you know, you're gonna have intermittent headlight traffic, or you're gonna look at a wood, a very large wooden fence, which, you know...
Well, you can do, what I was starting to say, you could do it, you could do it arborvitae along here, and if you look where I live, at that, it, those...
You get them pretty dense, yeah.
When those...
Until the deer get to them. I gave up, I gave up after about 10 years.
It's not been the case, it's not been the case by us over there, and when those things were installed, they were, they were shorter than Mary life.
I got them to like 15 feet, and they were beautiful, and then they stripped up to seven feet, and I pulled them out.
Do your neighbors have been talking?
Not yet, we're sort of waiting till we get more, the goal is to...
We do have a lot of them. Yeah, and they're not very, they're weak, you know, they have a tendency to split in the four parks with the ice. They're beautiful, though, when they're doing well.
See what their concerns are.
But they do get dense, it does get dense, and they are beautiful, but they're like handy to the deer.
They must have had to come over while we were there and poke around.
And we did, just for your reference, discuss fencing with the zoning board, because when we were last here, we were talking about how it's silent in the business, and they said, that basically what you were saying, like, it kind of depends on, you know, what your neighbors think, how you're gonna shield light, and...
Yeah, and I'm only one vote, but I mean, I, we would be sensitive to providing, you Yeah, and I'm only one vote, but I mean, I, we would be sensitive to providing, you know, to what the code allows, which I think is five feet of screening. Because if people are more, if the neighbors are more sensitive to, you know, the light penetration, obviously, you're not gonna get, if you can get a dense hedge, you can, you can, you can probably meet both, best of both worlds. But that comes to the thickness of this versus this, right? You know, so I mean, it's, the question is, because that was my issue, too, obviously, in the village lot. I wanted it dense, but I wanted it as narrow as it could go, the, the thues are there, the arborvitae's are the best, but, um, there's not a whole lot of options, you know? Now it's a privet, and it's awful.
It's surprising, like, when you look back at that lot, I think also because it slopes down, you're kind of looking, you know, you're not seeing the fences, or you're, you're looking above them more. But there is solid fence almost around the entire property, um, except for one little lot on that side, which has an arborvitae head, which is. So it's just interesting, because while we're really not looking to put a solid fence around, it's, it's actually already there, um, in some regard, but a lot of it is small.
Yeah, I think that we would be sensitive to, at the public hearing, just to kind of what the, what the feedback is, because ultimately, for your purposes, I mean, unless you could need it for security, right? If you want a perimeter fence, you're really talking about your impacts to them more than their impacts to you, so, I mean, it, and, because you guys don't have a need for enclosure, right?
No.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so it would be about doing something that was attractive for them more than what we need. Is it all right if I just walk on your property and look?
You may absolutely walk on the.
Yeah, that's great, maybe, well, yeah, so is that, is that okay? We, we do actually have a form that we have to start using.
I think we signed that for the historic board, I don't know if that goes for anyone.
And do think about, if there's two feet of snow, where you can put your piles, you know, just, just, not because we have some rule, but just because.
Can I just get a quick question? What, the drainage here goes into this French drain?
Here, yeah.
It actually heads to the back of the property, not towards Main Street.
Because the, the surface goes towards Main Street.
It does, so, and the drainage underneath.
All the roof drains go onto the parking lot?
Not onto the parking lot, they go into the, um, into the French drain here. So, the legal proposal was that on this side, we were gonna bring some drainage into the planting area.
That's right.
And then the drainage on this side would come into these French, those French drains.
Oh.
That's not the same as the infiltration from Jersey.
Okay, so just, you just said that drainage will come into that area where the door is?
So the, the, no, it's not going on the pavement, the, the roof drainage will go into heights, which will go underground into the front.
All right.
Yeah, we're not, we're not draining.
I'm like, okay.
No, no roof drainage would be, um, going onto any ground surface, everything will go into the ground.
Okay.
And Glenn could probably answer more about how the plant would fit.
Well, that can be treated, that can be treated to absorb some of the water, it's not gonna handle that.
It's gonna be like a Kesman? It's, it's functioning as like a Kesman basin there?
This?
But with nothing coming out of it, yeah?
Probably is, my, my guess is that it's, it's, it's not big enough to handle it all, then.
Right.
All right, but, but it certainly could handle some of it, in this form of what they call rain guard, which is.
Right.
It's basically a puddle that's planted and landscaped to a tour border.
One of the things that I know the consultant's gonna ask for, and one of the comments that I'm gonna make, is I want to, and I'm sure he's gonna want to see the calculations, because if you have this surface area in here, and also, I guess this is a, a green drain in here?
Yeah, there's, there's drain under that.
Okay, and then there's roof drainage, all going into what seems to be maybe a nine-foot wide, um, riprap outlet? That's.
Well, that's, we certainly will provide the calculations, but the standard is to handle the increase, the standard is not to capture it all. And, and, and we believe it will catch more than the increase.
The increase?
The twenty percent increase in, uh, on permeable surface area.
Yeah, the increase runoff, the, the, the project will cause an increase in water, and that's what our, what our, actually, I think this is small enough that there is, actually, is no real requirement.
So you're only calculating to the increase, not to the fall?
That's what our obligation is to, if there's an obligation, and it may not be because of the size of the lot. If the size of the lot were in watershed, New York City watershed, it'd be different, but the rules change when you get over there. But, uh, at the most, we have, our legal obligation is to handle the increase in runoff from the site.
When it's new construction now, I thought if it was new construction, then all of a sudden, you're starting from the beginning.
Technically, it's reconstruction. It's not.
It's not, it's.
Uh, I'm not sure that's true, would that be a, well, it's supposed to handle, I'll, I'll shift it over to John as well.
Yeah.
Well, the parking lot exists. Yeah, the parking.
Parking lot exists, but it's a brand-new.
It's a brand-new site.
Site plan, which means that no runoff can go onto any other property. Is that not correct?
That's not correct, that's not correct. What happens is when you, when you, the best solution is to capture all the water, let's say we have a new piece of property that's never been built on. Your goal ideally is to capture all of the water and treat it on-site, and, and at that point, if you can show that you can do that, you have no requirement. Because you've treated it on-site. If you're incapable of doing that, then you have to have measures to treat the water before it escapes the site and meter the water escaping the site, so it doesn't go off the site any faster than it used to go off. But it doesn't mean you may not shed water from the site, it, it, it just doesn't mean it.
That's why we have consultants.
No, I'm sure, you know, you, you could check me.
Well, I don't have it in front of me, so.
Not, well, here's a question, if you did absolutely nothing to your parking lot, and you left it the exact same way it was, we couldn't even have a conversation about the drain? That doesn't seem, makes sense either.
Well, it wouldn't be a new site plan, it wouldn't be in front of the planning board, they'd be doing a restoration. So it's, 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 it's apples and oranges.
Just an academic statement.
We would be before the planning board, because we have to address parking, and if we're, you know, if our use is increasing parking.
It would probably be, but it'd probably be just an amendment to the site plan to just show a different parking plan. You're accommodating everything on-site, you don't have a change of use, right? If you wanted to increase the parking.
Right, so.
Yeah.
So Ezra, I'm sorry, with your question, are you saying, like, if we're doing a new building, but we're not changing the?
Well, the, well, the question was, no, it's an academic question, obviously, you're making a parking lot. The, what I'm saying is that, because you're changing, you know, we can't treat the parking lot and the building differently, is that correct? The building is completely new, is a new construction, and there, or the parking lot is a construction, or is it a reconstruction? That doesn't matter, that's the question. Right? Does that make sense?
It does, yeah, and, and I like where you go. I mean, I appreciate it, because.
I'm just being honest, and ultimately, you know, from the viewpoint of the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, cool.
I, I think.
But it is an undeveloped plan right now, we do have a parking lot, but we're improving, or some may be, we need something, but we're improving in terms of organizing the parking and the access.
Yeah, because Judith puts out, it's a good point, you're building what is essentially the biggest parking lot, paved surface. On Main Street. Your paving law, I just said, is on Main Street, right?
So Matt, you'll have, um.
Good job.
John, look at both the, um, fact that it's going into a brick, which is going into the Hudson, and the.
Is that considered a tributary of the Hudson? It is, right? It may have to be, because it flows directly in.
Yes, so it was, is that issue, it's also the issue of quantity of water going into it, and how much needs to be treated?
Yeah, you're a good neighbor. I just read them out about structures of adjoining property owner. It says, protect the joiners' structures over the property line and maintain access during construction. That's being a good neighbor, a really good neighbor.
Yeah.
We'll see how it pans out.
You're good to you, man. It'll be good.
They just, you can go on the environmental mapper, in, in New York City Environment D, using the environmental mapper, and if you look for wetlands and watercourses and stuff, this does not appear on it. I mean, it is still a tributary, but it's not classified stream of any kind that I can find.
Because it's under the whole town until it gets that, right?
It was just, it was.
And that's why we leave that to the consultant, it would be a tragedy.
It was a discussion point during, during the comp plan, though, because I was on that committee.
Yeah.
Talked about it.
Yeah, and that's certainly the other discussion, is how the comp plan relates your code and the application of the code, um, once it's, uh, once it's adopted. Okay, I think we're good. Thank you, very good. Thank you so much, thanks.
Thank you for your time, yeah.
Thanks. Uh, public comments, just you, any comment?
Good job, guys.
Uh, we have the board business, motion to adjourn.
Do we have any minutes?
Oh, you know what, actually, it's a good point, now that you're here, we actually might be able to do some.
Well, I'm just saying, we've been trying to approve minutes for a while.
So we've got a set with Matt, Ezra, Dave.
Yeah, I think we.
Well, we did those.
We did the one that we needed Dave, I think.
Then there's one with Matt, Judith, and Arnie.
We did that one, we did that one last week.
The eight-ten one?
This is the one we didn't do?
The one, Arnie was here, was Arnie here last? No, he was here.
What we need to do is, we canceled last one before.
Matt, you're supposed to keep track of which ones we approved.
It's hard to do everything.
Yeah, this, this one is, is Matt, Ezra, and myself, so, so we couldn't have done that, because I hadn't been here.
Right. All right, so Matt, Judith, and Ezra, that's, I think this is the one we did, Matt, Judith, and Ezra last time.
Yeah, we were to do that one, yeah.
No, this is nine-fourteen, this is the one we made, we didn't do much.
This is the meeting we just had.
Yeah, it was just.
So we can approve that, and then that one we can approve.
This is July thirteenth.
Yeah, but take care.
And we could not approve the eight-ten minutes, because it's in the minutes that we couldn't approve the eight-ten minutes. We approved the seven-thirteen minutes.
All I did was run by to print them, because I can't print.
How could you approve them? I wasn't here.
We, I made a motion to approve the seven-thirteen meeting minutes, as amended.
Yeah, but you weren't here at that meeting.
Yes, she was.
No, 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 one, we had one.
No, only, seven-thirteen, only Arnie was, this period, Arnie, sorry, was absent. It was Matt, Ezra, Judith.
Excuse me, I stand corrected.
Seven-thirteen is approved, right?
I take this seriously.
Well, you do have to make sure they're in the.
I love, thank the videos, too, the videos come in even more handy. So we need the nine-fourteen, which is Matt, Judith, and Ezra. It was called seven-four, change the rate to seven-thirteen minutes, no, this is the meeting we just had to adopt minutes.
I moved, I moved, we approved the nine-fourteen.
A second.
Fall of favor, nine, nine-twenty-eight, approved, we have, approved on nine-twenty-five, two copies, please. And the seven-thirteen, we already did, so that's it.
No, we have one with Dave.
No, that one, Judith was here, you guys already approved those, that was seven-thirteen.
What about, is there one with you, me, and Matt?
And where's that?
Well, it's going back.
So it's the eight-ten that we need to approve. So that's got me, Judith, and Arnie.
Okay.
Nope, foiled again.
All right, nothing, nothing.
So we can't let Arnie retire until we approve all the minutes.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to John, see if we can, if we can get edits from people and then just, I don't think you can, though, you have to inform the people that are at the meeting.
You have to inform them.
You know, so I don't know, um, we'll get Arnie in here once more.
So there are new board member?
We have, um, yeah, we have one, we haven't gotten the application, but somebody has expressed interest, um, and then two people have expressed interest, and you.
The guy came back, yeah, so I was gonna go up and talk to him.
Yeah, that'd be great, that would get, get you all off the hook.
Yeah, and he can join, right?
Oh, there's nothing about citizenship, it's only about being a resident of the.
I met him, he's a nice guy.
Anybody who's an engineer, we're listening to engineers.
I know, isn't that terrible?
Yes, all I know is property management.
How's the house coming?
It's good.
Yeah?
It's good, it's crazy.
Motion to adjourn?
Well.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Seconded, all favor.
Aye.